Hey, how are you doing? Where have you been?
I don't think you love us anymore.
Oh. How are you doing? Do good? Oh, don't call me ma'am. You're only right.
I don't have a problem.
I'm fifty-four.
We get the back of the building. I've got some other stuff messaging the owners and stuff to figure out.
What I do?
Better than you can.
True. Yeah, that's what I've come to ask you about though. Okay. So I want, I was gonna ask you what, how, oh, through Benton, okay.
We've, we've, we've looked at and talked about what they need to provide. As for the access to that, that just has a difference between the owners there.
But just to, I mean, as far as making it easy enough on them to provide a site plan.
Yeah, they can probably get a contractor to just provide something to, it's gonna smoke this very.
Yeah, because they were talking.
Somebody else's property.
Like ten thousand dollars for an engineered site plan and everything, and that was cost prohibitive to them. And I want their business to grow and expand, I wanna be supportive of their business.
And we talked to Mike, Mike was around about that. They're on some, but no, they can probably get a contractor to stretch something off of the dimensions. Say it's gonna drain this way, this way, and this way, you know. That's all you, that's all you want from that. For that's all you need.
Yeah, that's what I meant, it's a pretty simple thing.
For that job, that's all you need.
Okay, thank you.
Make sure it's not gonna drain, the building's gonna door.
Have you talked with Lisa then? So that's good.
That sounds like, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's a new job.
Okay, that's good.
Oh, quick schedule.
Okay, that's what I was hoping. Great, I'll, I'll forward that to Michelle tomorrow, and she needs to contact you for more. You hold in line? Where am I?
He was gonna go and talk to him, we were over here.
So he knows us up?
He talked to him.
Okay. The Dennis office? Andy did?
Andy, that's Andy.
Okay, so it's Andy. So if they need to talk to him, they'd be Andy. He's like, what I do? Okay. I don't know, you were pointing at him, I think he's giving it up. Am I still doing this? Oh, he's coming over, one, two, three.
I haven't done that.
Guys, we started at the beginning.
But I go, it's got like a lot of these on the inside.
Yeah, I can't see it.
It's all.
Yeah, I can't see it.
Oh, quick schedule.
Okay, that's what I was hoping. Great, I'll, I'll forward that to Michelle tomorrow, and she needs to contact you for more. You hold in line? Where am I?
He was gonna go and talk to him, we were over here.
So he knows us up?
He talked to him.
Okay. The Dennis office? Andy did? Okay, so it's Andy. So if they need to talk to him, they'd be Andy. He's like, what I do? Okay. I don't know, you were pointing at him, I think he's giving it up. Am I still doing this? Oh, he's coming over, one, two, three.
I haven't done that. It's kinda.
Guys, we started at the beginning.
But I go, it's got like a lot of these on the inside.
Yeah, I can't see it.
It's all.
Yeah.
This is their contract.
Yeah, I can't see it. Yeah, I can't see it.
Oh, it's small.
Thank you now, but four's now, you gotta come to town. I don't think I did. How are you doing?
You know, we had the others. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be, we're doing the ground, that's ours. We're gonna work southeast, which, which way is it draining? Or is it about ten foot spot there? Is it draining, is it just playing or is it off here there? Yeah, we don't know that, we can't tell. So I'm sure it's everywhere to these, there's water coming out.
Yeah.
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 So this is.
Yeah.
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 Guys, we started at the beginning.
But I go, it's got like a lot of these on the inside.
Yeah, I can't see it.
Yeah.
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 How are you doing?
Yeah.
Sorry.
You know, we had the others.
Besides, we're doing the ground, that's ours. We're gonna work southeast, which way is it draining? Or is it about ten foot spot there? Is it draining, is it just playing or is it off here there? Yeah, we don't know that, we can't tell. So I'm sure it's everywhere to these, there's water coming out.
Yeah.
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 Well, then, down.
So this is.
It's always strange, say, east, to the west, to the east, but there's a water line right there.
Yeah.
And I'd be fine with it.
Yeah.
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 Maybe, maybe I'm a little bit sore.
Yeah.
He's starting to watch.
Yeah.
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 You don't see yourself at the sewer, showing a little boost of my ass, that's gonna be ripped through if you get flat through. Sure the pipe, you know, come right over here.
And wherever you go, go underground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those regular city council meeting order, implication by Pastor Michael Van Chatte. For all those who wish to pray, I invite you to join me as we direct these words to God. Good, great, and sovereign Lord, we come now and direct these words from our mouths and the meditations of our hearts to you. We thank you for the blessings of life, health, community, and ordered governance in our common life. We thank you for all those gathered here to conduct the people's business for the city of Taylorville. We thank you for the answered call to service evidenced in the lives of our elected city leaders. May your wisdom, justice, righteousness, and peace guide them not only in their personal lives, but especially tonight in the discharge of their civic duties. We further thank you for the abundant blessings you've given upon the people of our community, the people on whose behalf our city council serves. May they be blessed not only in the work done tonight on their behalf in this council meeting, but also be blessed by you. We humbly acknowledge tonight the challenging, difficult, anxious time we find ourselves in as a city, state, nation, and even as part of the global community. As the challenge, as challenging as the past days have been in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, we know that many more difficult days lie ahead. May a sense of your peace, calm, your patience, and most especially your love pervade in the hearts of all, and may our council be a sign and a light of working together for the common good. Help us to focus on loving you, loving each other, and may we do all we can to keep ourselves and everyone else safe. With all our efforts and your guidance, we know that you will see us through this crisis. This we pray tonight to you, our Lord and our God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Megan Bryan?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Here.
On the West School Minor Subdivision, the planning commission recommends location map, vote four to zero, motion carry. Here.
Mary Bud?
Here.
Kathy Driscoll?
Here.
Lee Landzetti?
Here.
Here.
All of them are present. On the final plat of West School Minor Subdivision, with the stipulation that curbs and gutters and sidewalks be part of the subdivision. Use the month, we're suspended use the month and volunteer the month due to coronavirus, so we'll pick that up once we're safe to gather and crowd bigger than what is gathered here tonight. Omniscop designation.
I'm moving.
Motion to recommend was four to zero in favor. Most approved by Alderman Dorst and second by Alderman Bryant. Roll call. Thank you for your work, Mr. Cretzer.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
In order to amend the zoning classification of certain property.
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
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 Megan Bryan?
I think you need to take a motion on their recommendations.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Take a motion on their recommendations.
Take first a location map.
Minutes of the regular meeting held March second, two thousand twenty. Motion on the planning commission on the. Minutes of the personnel committee meeting held March fifth, two thousand twenty.
Location map.
On the location map. Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Alder. Minutes of the emergency service committee meeting held March fifth, two thousand twenty. Roll call.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Minutes of the Lincoln Airport Committee meeting held March twelfth, two thousand twenty.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
And minutes of the water environmental committee meeting held March twelfth, two thousand twenty.
Crystal Teddy?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Motion to approve all these.
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Motion by Alderman Skoltede, second by Alderman Driscoll, roll call.
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Sean Burle? Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
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 Megan Bryan? Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Yes.
Larry Bud? Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Yes.
Sean Burle? Crystal Teddy?
Yes.
Mary Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Planning Commission recommendations, Mr. Cretzer?
Mr. Mayor, on the West School Minor Subdivision, the planning commission recommends location map, vote four to zero, motion carry. On the final plat of West School Minor Subdivision, with the stipulation that curbs and gutters and sidewalks be part of the subdivision. Motion to recommend was four to zero in favor.
Thank you for your work, Mr. Cretzer. In order to amend the zoning classification of certain property.
I think you need to take a motion on their recommendations, sir.
Take a motion on their recommendations.
Take first a location map.
Motion on the planning commission on the.
Location map.
On the location map.
So.
Motion by Alderman Bud, second by Alderman Alder. Roll call.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Jim Hollis?
Yes.
Crystal Teddy?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Now we need a motion on the.
Final plat.
Final plat.
As recommended by the planning commission with curbs and gutters and sidewalks.
I'm making that one. Motion by Alderman Alder.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bryant. Roll call.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Jim Hollis?
Yes.
Crystal Teddy?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Crystal Teddy?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Mary Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Lee Landzetti?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorton?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Megan Bryan?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burle?
No.
Motion fails seven to one.
Motion to approve the city filing a proof of claim and release in the class action lawsuit liquid aluminum sole plate antitrust litigation pending in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and to submit any and all other documents in support of said proof of claim and release. Motion by Alderman Burle?
Second.
Second by Alderman Skoltede?
Just a matter of comment, I think I sent everyone an email what this was all about. This came across Dave's desk, and I asked him to take a look at it. The actual deadline to file this proof of claim had expired, the time that we, everybody got it. But it seems that they may be, they may be accepting late filings. You got some communications from some outfit that says, hey, we'll do this for you, we'll take a third of any recovery, which means that the class action attorneys are already gonna take a third, you're down to one-third if in fact you get anything. So we decided that let's try this route, you guys file it on your own, so at least you'll get two-thirds if you get anything. So you're just approving this so that Dave can sign off, and the mayor can sign off, and we can get it in the mail, and see what happens.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Discussion of opinion letters from Bittman Associates concerning the current status of the property located at two oh four East Main Cross, Tannanville, Illinois, and any motions relating there too. Now I'll read this letter from Bittman Associates that we just got this afternoon. Dear Mayor Barry, this letter reports our recommendation for limited access concerning the building demolition at two oh four East Main Cross. Based on our observation during limited structural inspection conducted on March twelfth, we recommend the structure be considered for immediate demolition based on our conclusion that the structure is an immediate and continuing hazard to public safety as a dangerous and unsafe building. Furthermore, we recommend limiting all access to the unstable building due to the present safety risk. We request a variance to ways that I E P A requirements conduct hazardous material inspection, asbestos, in the building prior to demolition due to the building being structurally unsafe. The building demolition and disposal shall be completed in accordance with all applicable local, state, federal laws, codes, rules, and regulations for commercial buildings. That is from Matthew B. Hardy, P E and S E licensed structural engineer of Bittman Associates. That's a letter that we received this afternoon. So that carries on.
Mr. Barry, you also received a communication of March thirteenth, that everyone has got a copy of, which has photographs of the subject building, that the structure in there was reciting to you, that they actually was on the aerial ladders and looked at and inspected it. There's more details actually what's wrong with that particular building here.
Due to the imminent danger, I asked most of you one-on-one last Thursday to approve a ratified contract with Joe Coleman and/or Joe Coleman salvage and demolition to demoliary move all debris, garbage, junk from the property located at two oh four East Main Cross, and to waive any and all statutory and city bidding requirements concerning this contract. So we need a motion to waive the statutory bidding requirements. Motion by Alderman Bud? Second.
Second.
Alderman Burle? Questions or comments?
The only question I had Thursday night was, the property owner seems like he's kinda getting all scot-free here a little bit. So was there any kind of agreement with him on considering his public loss at some point, or receiving the property at the end of this, or?
We are in negotiation with him, Rocky and myself, along with Mr. Parker and his attorney have been in discussion about different things. We've also noticed that probably the second building to the east needs to come down also, so we've been in discussion, the third building is still one of those things, so. Our attorney and Mr. Parker and him and his attorney have been in discussion this afternoon over this. But my, my feeling is on this particular first building, it needs to come down as soon as possible, and that's why I asked you individually last week if we could waive the bidding process. Mr. Coleman has got the letter from the EPA, he's ready to start work tomorrow, so.
Employees cannot run the equipment right there.
No, they're, I use them strictly for weed eating and mowing and cleaning up and stuff like that.
Alderman Driscoll?
Is there gonna be any kind of, have you heard of any kind of federal assistance for these types of situations to help out communities that are?
Well, I believe in, in some bill that maybe passed through the House on Friday, it's five hundred billion dollars set aside for this coronavirus. And so how that will be distributed, I don't know in, in the states also. So, in talks with our meetings yesterday with the EMA director and stuff, we think that a lot of these costs will be reimbursed. But without knowing, that's why the meeting we had today with the superintendents and the chiefs, I emphasize that they track every expenditure so that we do able to get reimbursed. But the, the question is, we don't know if this is gonna go on for two weeks, six months, two years, or whatever. So, they can promise you all the money, but I guarantee you, if it runs six months, every municipality, every state is going to be hurting financially. So, that's one of the things. Is this a needed position? I believe it is. Are we hiring somebody new? No, we're replacing a current physician. Are we concerned with the finances? Of course we are. But I don't know if this is the place where we need to cut. Again, if we find out later in the year that we cannot actually afford it, uh, you know, then we can entertain layoffs and things like that. But that subsidy will have to decide later on down the road. Okay? Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheneath?
Yes.
Kathy Driscoll?
Yes.
Lee Lanzotti?
Uh, yes.
Jim Olin?
Yes.
Crystal Teddy?
Yes.
Megan Bryant?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
No.
Motion carries seven to one. Motion to approve the purchase of a 2020 Dodge Wrangler for the fire department, utilize, utilize the Illinois State Police contract pricing at a cost not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, which include trade-in values for the two thousand Jeep and the two thousand Mercury Outboard. I think the bid, or the bid came in at thirty thousand. I think we were gonna get seventeen hundred and fifty trade-in on both the Jeep for twelve fifty and the boat for five hundred. Now, if we approve this purchase, we still have time to decide if we wanna trade those vehicles or motors, the boat and the Jeep, if we wanna trade them in and pay the extra seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. So, that's the motion on the floor.
Let me comment on that.
Yeah, let's get a motion first if we can.
Let me ask that the motion be modified somewhat. There is a statute that wherever you trade in vehicles for another vehicle, you have to solicit competitive bids to do that. It looked to me like, looking at the minutes, that there was a, six vehicles that was obtained. I assume those were bids that were obtained. So that we don't have to, if they weren't actual bids, then just make a motion. Including that motion to waive any statutory requirement of competitive bids. It's just an odd statute that says wherever you trade in vehicles for another vehicle, you gotta do competitive bids, so.
So, do I get a motion to approve the purchase? Motion, Alderman Bryant, second.
Second, so again, firm as ever.
Second, Alderman Bertle, questions or comments? Alderman Bertle?
Well, I mean, we're gonna cut back. I mean, I hate to pick on the fire department tonight. And I know you're smiling back there, but this is definitely someplace we could cut back. So, I, this is a no brainer here.
Alderman Scott Teddy?
He took more than I would like, but.
Alderman Driscoll?
Does the exact same thing I'm saying, say to table this till we know our money situation better.
All right.
Not essential, officer, right?
We got a motion and a second, so we will vote. Roll call.
Bernie Dorcheneath?
No.
Kathy Driscoll?
No.
Lee Lanzotti?
No.
Jim Olin?
No.
Crystal Teddy?
Nope.
Megan Bryant?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
No.
John Bertle?
No.
Motion fails seven to one. Motion to approve the city filing a proof of claim and release in a class action lawsuit, liquid aluminum sole plate antitrust litigation pending in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and to submit any and all other documents in support of said proof of claim and release. Motion, Alderman Bertle?
Second.
Second, Alderman Scott Teddy?
Just a matter of comment. I think I sent everyone an email what this was all about. This came across Dave's desk and he asked us to take a look at it. Uh, the actual deadline to file this proof of claim had expired from the time that we, we, everybody got it. But it seems that, that maybe, they may be accepting late filings. You got some communications from some outfit that says, hey, we'll do this for you. We'll take a third of any recovery, uh, which means that the class action attorneys are already gonna take a third. You're down to one-third if in fact you get anything. So, we decided that let's try this route. You guys file it on your own, so at least you'll get two-thirds if you get anything. So, you're just approving this so that Dave can sign off and the mayor can sign off and we can get it in the mail. And see what happens.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Discussion of opinion letters from Bitten and Associates concerning the current status of the property located at two oh four East Main Cross, Kentville, Illinois, and any motions relating there too. Now, I'll read this letter from Bitten and Associates that we just got this afternoon. Dear Mayor Barry, this letter reports our recommendation for limited access concerning the building demolition at two oh four East Main Cross. Based on our observation during limited structural inspection conducted on March twelfth, we recommend the structure be considered for immediate demolition based on our conclusion that the structure is an immediate and continuing hazard to public safety as a dangerous and unsafe building. Furthermore, we recommend limiting all access to the unstable building due to the present safety risk. We request a variance to ways that I E P A requirements conduct hazardous material inspection, asbestos in the building prior to demolition due to the building being structurally unsafe. The building demolition and disposal shall be completed in accordance with all applicable local, state, federal laws, codes, rules, and regulations for commercial buildings. That is from Matthew B. Hardy, P E and S E, licensed structural engineer of Bitten and Associates. That's the letter we received this afternoon. So, that carries on.
You also received a communication of March thirteenth that everyone has got a copy of, which has photographs of the subject building. That the structure in there was reciting to you that they actually was on the aerial ladders and looked at and inspected it. There's more details actually what's wrong with that particular building here.
Due to the imminent danger, I asked most of you one-on-one last Thursday to approve a ratified contract with Joe Coleman and/or Joe Coleman salvage and demolition to demolish and remove all debris, garbage, junk from the property located at two oh four East Main Cross, and to waive any and all statutory and city bidding requirements concerning this contract. So, we need a motion to waive the statutory bidding requirements. Motion, Alderman Bud, second.
Second.
Alderman Bertle, questions or comments?
The only question I had Thursday night was, the property owner seems like he's kinda getting all scuffed right here a little bit. So, was there any kind of agreement with him on considering either keeping some of the costs at some point or receiving the property at the end of this?
We are in negotiation with him, Rocky and myself, along with Mr. Parker and his attorney have been in discussion about different things. We've also noticed that probably the second building to the east needs to come down also. So, we've been in discussion. The third building is still one of those things. So, our attorney and, and Mr. Parker and him and his attorney have been in discussion this afternoon over this. But my, my feeling is on this particular first building, it needs to come down as soon as possible. And that's why I asked you individually last week if, if we could waive the bidding process. Mr. Coleman has got the letter from the E P A. He's ready to start work tomorrow.
He started, he started, he started.
Well, well, I'm, but as far as just starting demolishing, I think it was all hand-to-hand work.
And I think the motion is gonna be subject to, I believe, the mayor has received a verbal okay from Mr. Parker to go ahead and demolish the building. I've given you an affidavit and consent to demolish the property, which we're asking him to sign. And that's what he was reviewing with his attorney today. So, this motion is to waive the bidding, authorize the contract, but subject, of course, to Mr. Parker at least signing that document. And, uh, you'll see the communications that, uh, we, I sent out today were, yeah, Mr. Nelson, the attorney for the B D D ordinance. I asked him, what about putting the same kind of language that I've got in the affidavit and consent to demolish the property in the B D D ordinance as you have tonight? He says he could do that.
Right.
And that's probably what we're gonna recommend the language be changed. What essentially says this, folks, is that, in, in the document that we're asking to sign, and if you guys go forward with the B D D ordinance and the development agreement, is that he would be obligated on paper to reimburse the city for the cost of the demolition. And if, and in fact, if he doesn't pay it, then you would acquire, uh, we have a lien on the building and acquire title to the building that you demolish and empty lot. Uh, we are being told that he is, uh, doesn't have the wherewithal to pay for the demolition cost. The mayor has asked him, because a couple of you rightly so, asked questions. How do we know that for sure? The mayor is asking for some kind of a financial affidavit to show that he does or does not have it. The property owner's standing is not insured. And, uh, so, as a practical matter, on paper, if he's gonna reimburse it, yes, you could, can you go on fighting? And yes, you could. Yes, you could, uh, go get a judgment and try to get him to pay it. But if in fact he's judgment proof, the question was last week was the imminent danger of it collapsing. And, and the mayor had to shut down the business, they, what is it, fly high?
Uh-huh.
Today, the mayor shut it down anyway, so, I mean, the governor, so, uh, that, that may not be, but it's, according to the letters, it's about ready to fall over.
True.
If particularly one wall. So, what you're doing tonight is giving him the okay to get the contract signed and waive the bidding, subject to Mr. Parker's signing that document. Between now and Thursday, I think the mayor's gonna call a special meeting so that by, hopefully by then, you'll have some sense as whether it's one building, two buildings, or three buildings. And what is the terms and conditions of it? That make sense? Questions?
The, the only thing that I'm determined about is, and again, I'm fine, I'm fine. I gave the yes to, to spend, to spend the money to, to knock it down. One thing I have to turn on, before we get going too far, is that for the expenditures, we're gonna have to be up to dole out for this, that, uh, he's gotta be on, you know, he's gotta try to hope he hears this. It seems that there's asbestos, and if we go further, the money we're expending out, it would say that we need to recuperate from all three. You know, because we're never gonna get all of our money back. And, which is, is, is not the real case, but, uh, but I think we need to move forward and look to see what it would cost to demo all the buildings at once. Because there may be more associated costs trying to be specific with knocking one building down, knocking one building down without trying to do damage to the next. You know, so if we could hold off to a certain extent to get it into a safe position and then progress further to see if he's gonna deed all these buildings over to us and be able to knock them down all, once we made it, we'll save five, ten, fifteen thousand dollars.
I agree. I think the, the main thing is the imminent danger. We are going to resurface that road. I'd like to get all three buildings torn down in the next two weeks if possible. Because I'd hate for that second, third building to fall on our new paved road on East Main, where, whereas we're putting new water lines and things like that, potentially getting, uh, some of our employees hurt or, again, tearing up the road. Mr. Parker has indicated he does not have insurance. Is it, and, and we will be able to use B D D funds out of this. And I think with discussions with our attorney and, and Mr. Parker's attorney, we should be able to come up with an agreement of at least tearing two of the buildings down and then possibly the third, and so we'll go from there.
The question that I think he's, he's, he, Mr. Parker is incidentally sent in was, if, if you were inclined to do all three contracts, is asking that he convey title to all three. So, the city would end up owning them at the end. And, uh, we've confirmed that, that the mayor's been told, we've confirmed that the attorney for the B D D, Steve Klein, say that this is a legal, legitimate expenditure of B D D funds for the demolition. So, what you're doing would be legal if you wanted to.
I just, I just don't wanna get on the hook. I got some big work today from the B D D agreement that basically, there, there was nothing in there about him being, everything was to be done at our expense and without anything on there having emailed about it. But there needs to be some kind of purpose in there. You know, I, I don't wanna sign off and vote yes for anything that says, basically, we're gonna take, you know, because that'll ba, basically untie his hands and just say, no, I'm gonna keep it and I'm gonna sell it and I'm gonna get, you guys spent five fifty thousand dollars knocking down three buildings and then I'm gonna sell it and get ten, fifteen thousand dollars out of it. I didn't look.
Right. And I rece, I received a reply back from attorney Nelson, probably around four o'clock or so today, that the language that I asked to put in there, that would be similar to the affidavit consent language, that he, uh, he said it's okay to put that in there. So, tonight when it comes up, I would suggest that you put that language in there.
Right.
And that means that he would have to, he would be responsible on paper to pay for it. And if he didn't get it paid for, then we would own the property. So, uh, I'm relying upon what Mr. Nelson has told me. And the, the adjoining property owner, Mr. Patel, with the fly high, he's already signed the agreement that we asked him to sign, um, because his building is connected to one of the, that, I guess, would be the west wall. And, uh, his agreement is that, yeah, we can take it down. And he said that he's going to build, uh, a wooden structure to close it up himself on his side of the property.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Alderman Dorcheneath?
Last Thursday, at Mr. Romano's suggestion, um, the mayor was to ask each individual person, um, rather than as a particular,
Right.
whether they approve doing this or not. Last Thursday, my understanding was that we're gonna use B D D money to tear down the one building. And there wasn't any more discussion than I remember of the other two buildings. One of the things that made me in favor of it was because of the fact we were gonna spend B D D money. Um, if, if the B D D money wasn't available, just like Larry said tonight, we don't have money to be spending on stuff like that. So, that money would had, have had to come out if it was not budgeted for. Uh, to, to tear that one building down, would, the money would have had to come out of the general fund. And we said that, and it's seventy thousand dollars probably maximum to tear the one building down. You know, and, and time is, seems like it is of the essence because of the fact that there is a danger there. Somebody getting hurt. I would hope that common sense reasoning would keep you away from that building. But as everybody know, there, there's a definition for the word accident. Accidents happen. Also, the fact that, um, we're gonna fix up Main Street. Uh, it'd be kinda ridiculous to fix that street up and, and dump bricks on it. Uh, maybe you could try to protect that from happening, but, uh, you're still at risk of, of doing damage to the street. Now, today, uh, off and on, I've been looking at this problem all day long. I've been interrupted. I've got some things going on in my life that wouldn't let me just sit there and come up with a, a, a decision. And, um, one of the things that, um, I was privy to, um, Kathy Driscoll must have asked Mr. Romano a question today.
She did.
And Mr. Romano responded to her, and I got a copy of that. I tried to print that off and bring it with me tonight, but my computer printer would not allow that. Um, good, and so I'm, Mr. Romano, do you have a, have that copy? Would you read that, what you, what you wrote to Kathy Driscoll?
I will. Let me just pull it up here. Okay, said Kathy, "The affidavit and consent to demolish property in its present form only concerns the demolition of one of the three buildings, i.e. the building where the roof collapsed. The affidavit and consent does not provide that Parker would reimburse the city," excuse me, "does provide that Parker would reimburse the city for the demolition cost and is promises secured by a lien on the property. We understand the subject building is uninsured and Parker claims he does not have the funds to repay the city. Thus, the lien will ultimately allow the city following the demolition to own the lot where the one building is now located. The B D D ordinance, if adopted, provides that the city will demolish the subject building with B D D funds without any obligation to repay the city or to convey the property to the city following demolition. I have sent an email to attorney Nelson today asking if the ordinance should be revised to require Parker to repay the city for the cost of the demolition with the inclusion of an option for the city, assuming Parker does not repay the city, to acquire the subject property after demolishing the building without any payment to Parker." I'll stop there for a moment because I posed that question, uh, to Mr. Nelson and he replied affirmatively, we can make that language change. I go on to say, City Code Section is nine four, nine dash four dash one through nine dash four dash five makes it illegal to maintain a dangerous building and requires an order to tear down and remove or remodel the dangerous building to comply with the requirements for new buildings in the fire district. The landowner can be fined a minimum of two hundred and fifty dollars, up to a maximum of seven hundred and fifty dollars per day that the building remains a dangerous building. And of course, the owner would be responsible to pay the cost of demolition. Sixty-five I O C S five dash eleven, eight thirty-one, one addresses the available remedial action and/or demolition of a vacant, dangerous, or unsafe building and gives the city a lien for the cost of any remedial or demolition work on the subject building if the owner fails to remedy that dangerous and unsafe condition. Some paragraph E of that statute is the expedited procedure the city has used many times to demolish vacant, dangerous, and unsafe buildings that constitute an immediate and continuing hazard in our city. Attorney Rare called me a few minutes ago with Travis Parker in his office. Mr. Parker has entertained the thought of simply conveying all three buildings to the city in consideration of the city demolishing all three buildings. As a practical matter, mayor stated that Parker claims he does not have the funds to demolish any of these buildings. The mayor was informed last week that Mr. Parker only paid twenty-five thousand for all three buildings.
You know, you say he doesn't have the wherewithal to, to tear it down. Is, is, do you know if there's a, a mortgage on that property?
Uh, there, we had title searched. There is no mortgage on the property. There is a lien from the Illinois Department of Revenue, about seventeen hundred dollars is what I found. We had it, we had the title coming to a search.
So, yeah, let me see if I understand, it's, either he had the wherewithal or somebody had the wherewithal to come up with the money to pay for that building, twenty-five thousand.
I think when the mayor investigated further from him, uh, we think twelve thousand of that price came from his mother, but he claims he still owes his number four. That's what we're being told. But the mayor today, based on, uh, valid questions, has asked him to provide some proof of his financial situation.
Well, you've heard me say this before, you know, I feel strongly both ways. I, I would, I, one part of me wants that, that to happen, all three buildings be torn down. Uh, it's, it's, if not just the one building's dangerous, I think that, uh, if the other two buildings there, aren't dangerous now, they will be. I, um, as I understand it, there's either one or both of the other buildings are leaking water?
Well, we walked into it on Friday and I walked quickly through it because I wouldn't go stay here. But there was actual water falling on some kind of a, what, a bucket or something? And, and things were sagging, so.
There was numerous buckets of full water in, in building two, I recall, the middle building.
Okay, so.
You wouldn't camp out there.
Okay, so if we were to pretend that, um, the city has no involvement in this, what would Mr. Parker do? I mean, if, if the city didn't come to his rescue, then what would happen?
He would be sued if it fell and, for example, wiped out fly high. Or if it, uh, the structural engineer told us on, or Friday, I guess it was, Thursday down in the building right there, that that building, if it goes towards the, uh, Mitchelson Building, he could reach over there. And of course, then they would have a right to sue. But it's like anything else. We have legal rights to sue people for wrongdoing. But the question is, could you be able to collect from the judgment? And if, if it's uninsured and it's a practical matter, the folks are judgment proof. And by saying, or, but if he doesn't have the money to collect it, um, you gotta mess with your hands.
You know, and, and I don't wanna penalize Mr. Parker. I think that, you know, hindsight's always twenty-twenty and, um, I think he's, um, he, he probably didn't have that property expected before he purchased the property. But everybody, most people, most people in Taylorville, knew that what shape that building was in. And I think that, uh, Mr. Watchman was very fortunate that, uh, Mr. Parker came along and purchased that property. Otherwise, he'd be facing this. And he does have the wherewithal to, to do what needs to be done. One of the things that's, you know, and I, I think that the, this is a, I know what, I, I went through the, the B D D, um, stuff again today. Um, in fact, I was gonna give, I had practiced giving Kathy Driscoll a lecture tonight on the, the things that she didn't understand. But the B D D money, but come to find out, she probably knew more than I did, okay? And, um.
She asked some good questions today, honestly.
She did. So, um, so that, I, I, I chopped that off, that she's not gonna get the lecture tonight. I've already printed it off, off the list. Um, but, um, but, you know, the, and the thing is that, um, you know, we got, we've been criticized recently on the purchase of the, the generator for this building, emergency generator. And, and if you, if you look at the, and read through the booklet that Mr. Klein gave us, it talks about the B D D. That's a perfect example of what you can do with the B D D money. One of the other things is that, you know, we haven't been, um, denying people the B D D money. Uh, I mean, people have been asking for it and we've given money to people. And there's some coming along that's in the mail. There's some that we just recently approved. But something else, uh, along that same line is that, uh, and this talk has been going on for a long time about the hotel coming in, um, uh, out there in the, in the, uh, Rock Twenty-Nine area where the, um, industrial park is. And, um, just like Steak and Shake when they, uh, come to town, um, they wanted, they wanted some B D D money to improve infrastructure, et cetera. In fact, they said that, um, have, if the development behind the Steak and Shake comes to be, uh, some of the commercial buildings, et cetera, that's a story, is that the city's gonna be required to put in another lane and road to the tune of, I mean, about eight hundred thousand dollars. And I think that, as been mentioned before, that the B D D money would, uh, if, if in fact we were made to do that, as I understand it, right now, we're not made to do it because there is no evidence of new commercial, uh, buildings going in out there, new businesses coming in. So, until that happens, we don't have to put in that lane. But that's one of the things that, uh, probably is gonna have to happen. We're gonna have to put that other lane in for, uh, eight hundred thousand, mandated by the state. Before all of that, there was talk about, and one of the things, uh, was that, uh, that was used as evidence to support the B D D and the Tiff District was that there was, there's a hotel that's gonna come to town. That didn't happen. But now, um, we're hearing that there is evidence that they are, or somebody is looking to come to take a. Okay? And if they're gonna come in, they're gonna ask for B D D. So, I'm torn between spending that money on East Main. So, I'm torn between spending that money on East Main, and I don't, I don't deny it needs to be done, you don't have to convince me that, I know it needs to be done, but I'm torn between that, am I doing the right thing to vote for that and ignore all those other things? That's where I'm at, so, I'm not fully supporting East Main, although I told the mayor Thursday night I'm gonna support it, but I didn't know as much Thursday night as I know now. So, I'm kinda reneging on voting yes tonight on East Main, unless somebody can convince me that's the right thing to do. I'm done.
Well, the press is here, like Chris said, in the event that the building does come down, consequently, the second one is probably coming down, the whole synopsis is that I think what we should do is go ahead and take three down, and enlightening to how much it's going to cost if we can go ahead and do that. Like I said, Benton Associates looked at him, they told us that the statistics were, and I feel the money is coming out of the BDD for this purpose, Mr. Parker's going to be the ones going to have to pay the restitution if we wore the other way, and I think if we can do this, and the city becomes the owner of that property, that's what we need to do. I don't see any other way to get away from this, I can kinda agree with what Mr. Dorsonis says, but I, and I think right now, what we have to do, because if we build, if we tear down, and if we only tear down one building or two buildings, and the event is, when we go ahead and work on Main Street coming in, it could have, and also, it could affect Randy Mitchelson's property across the street, Mr. Romano said. So, my vote would be to go ahead and try to get three buildings taken down at the cost and see if we can do it at a reasonable price to the city through the BDD.
Anyone else?
Well, tonight, what we're voting on is two or four East Main Cross. If the mayor calls a special city council meeting for Thursday night, which I think he's going to, then we'll discuss the other, the two buildings. But actually, it's one partial, according to Andy today. But tonight, we're here to approve where the building is at danger. That's what tonight is about. Then, between now and Thursday, if the mayor pursues it, then we would get some cost estimates together from Mr. Coleman to see what it would cost, since he has the equipment here, to tear down the other two buildings or part, one partial. I can tell you this, I was in the building on Thursday. The center building is, if we don't, probably within, I'm gonna say six to eight months, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a structural engineer, but that building is not in very good shape. And so, we're gonna readdress this probably in six to eight months. But that all needs to be discussed Thursday night, and we need to vote on two or four tonight.
I just, something has been mentioned, but it's just food for thought. Keep in mind, as with we do, East Main Cross down there, it's all gonna be new, and I'm just sitting there thinking like on nights at the Eagles Club, when they have bingo and everything, people are parked all over, so I'm assuming that if we tore all three of these buildings down, then we would turn that into a parking lot of sorts, which would help probably more than just the Eagles Club even, the old back, I'm sure what the name of that is, yeah, Pillars, for overflow parking. It would, it would clean up the neighborhood considerable, so it's just something to think about.
I just wanted to clarify, and I appreciate you bringing up this comment, so the questions I have are not whether it needs to be demolished, obviously, it's unsafe, I understand that, and I'm fine with that. My question is, I hesitate to jump right into the city council where everything is looping in to save the day. My question about that was, first off, I'd like to see some proof, if someone says I can't pay, it's easy for someone to say that, but I'd like to see proof, so you're addressing that. Because I know that when the front facade came down off of the old Georgia's Candy Store, the bricks tumbled out into the street and everything, that was more of a hazard to me, it's a much more well-traveled area, but the city didn't do anything about that. Okay, no, and again, we're setting a precedent.
There was insurance involved in that.
There was insurance, okay. So, then if you have a situation like that, with this being said to be a pressing matter in an emergency situation, I felt that would have been as well. I'm just concerned, I wanna make sure as a steward for the city, that I'm doing my job to be sure that we're receiving, checking out any of the possible funds, if there's a way that this gentleman can, does have money and can pay for it, they should. If we do acquire the property, so then we're gonna be spending basically seventy thousand just to own one, and multiply that by three, if we're gonna do all three, which sounds like we will, then we are on the hook for those, and really, there's not much we're gonna be able to do with it besides a public parking spot. So, I'm looking ahead, and I'm trying to be a careful steward of our money, and trying to see if there's a better way to do this, if not other way, then it needs to be done for public safety. But my other question for you was, wasn't there something already on the ordinances? Is there some law already that you have to have a safe building? And you cited those to me, there actually is an ordinance stating that. And then when I looked at the affidavit, it said on there, it acknowledged this is not a safe building. So, I'm thinking if that's already the law, why haven't we been enforcing the law and told somebody, if you've got an unsafe building, you need to be doing something about it? And so, we wait till it falls down, and I have no money, and the city has to spook it. So, that was a point of my questions, this is my, my own thoughts on this, and why I asked you about, I just wanna clarify why, I'm not against demolition.
Well, I might answer a couple, I talked to the structural engineer today by phone, they said that this building needs to come down as soon as possible, that was the safety of it. I asked him, just off the top of his head, if I had him come inspect other buildings around the square, lower the approximate cost. He said just a ballpark figure depending on what he did, between eight hundred and a thousand dollars. Again, is that something that we want to encourage in the future? And who's going to pay for that inspection? We do not have a structural engineer on salary right now, and he's not capable. And so, do we want to go to that expense? That's up to the council. In the past, I don't think we've had any inspection policies on anything. Some of the cities do have an electrical inspection on the buildings and things like that. The city of Tenebros decided not to, because it probably is cause prohibited. You know, there's a few buildings that I would like to get inspected, and that's one of the things I'm gonna ask at the next finance meeting in April. Can we spend that money? But with Mr. Bud saying now, and again, I agree with the times that we're going through now, we don't have the extra money. So, again, there could be a building collapse in the next week or so, the one I'm talking about, probably the one next to read, you know, do we, you know, and so, do we find the owner, he doesn't have the money, or, you know, I don't know if he has the money?
This is gonna keep coming up.
Yeah, so, that's the thing. But what we're asking for to now, and I did get a verbal agreement from everyone except one, is we need to go so we can get this dangerous building torn down tomorrow. We can worry about putting a lien to things when we discuss with Mr. Parker in the next day or two with our city attorney and his attorney. And then, if we wanna go further with the other two buildings, or at least the other one in the middle, then we can discuss that. But I think the city has the money through the BDD fund, thank God we approved that a year and a half ago, because where would the city be without that, to be honest with it? And so, I think tonight, I think everybody-